Good morning. Good morning and welcome to this Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee meeting. I am councillor Ian Carrington, I am the chairman of this committee. Councillor Martin Griggs is the vice-chairman, he's not quite with us yet, I hope he will be in a second. Also in attendance we have our Democratic Services Officer, Jess Wossey Yates, and Kiara Hatziano, who is our scrutiny officer, is also in attendance. Other members and officers will join the committee as we go through the agenda. May I please remind everyone that the audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is broadcast live via the county council's website? And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and the press who are watching this live or watching a recording at a later time. We have no fire drill planned for this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, that is at that end of the chamber, and assemble in the front car park and wait for further instructions. Could I please remind everyone to ensure that their mobiles, laptops, iPads and any other device are switched to silent? I've just remembered to do mine. And also that we have a hearing loop activated for anyone who needs it. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman, who isn't here, and therefore by Jess, who is. We'll now move toward the formal agenda, so item one is apologies for absence and replacement members. Jess, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. So today I've received apologies from councillor Callum Cook, councillor Ian Fleetwood, and councillor Skinner will be replacing councillor Lynda Wooton today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item two, declaration of members' interests. Do any members wish to declare any interest which has not been declared previously in their pecuniary interest form? I'm looking around the chamber, I see no members coming forward. As ever, if an interest occurs to you as we move through the agenda, just catch the chairman's eye and you can declare that at the time. Item three, minutes of the meeting held on the 11th of July 2023. These have all been circulated to you with the agenda pack. So this item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record, and those are on pages five to 12 of the agenda pack. Now, I'm not going to go through them each one page by page, you've all had the opportunity to read them. Do I have a proposer for those minutes, please? Thank you very much. Proposed, a seconder, and that is duly seconded. So we will now vote. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Any against? I see none. Any abstentions? I see two. Thank you very much. Those minutes are agreed as a correct record. We now move to item four on the agenda, which is announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. And I will begin because since this committee last met, we have had the very, very sad news indeed of the passing of our colleague and our friend councillor Ray Wooton, who of course was my immediate predecessor as chairman of this committee. There will be an opportunity at our full council meeting on Friday for individual members to make individual comments and tributes to Ray. So this morning, I think, I hope at least, that I speak for everyone if I share a few thoughts. Ray, as I said, was a former member and indeed chairman of this committee. He died on the 27th of August. He was a county councillor since 2009, representing Grantham North. He had previously been chairman of the county council. He also served with distinction on Southcysteven District Council and indeed in many, many other roles. He was always an inspiring role model and an advocate for his division. But also, I think we should not let this meeting pass without remembering the incredible passion and commitment he had in supporting the National Health Service and particularly the hospital in Grantham, which he will be always, I think, associated with and for which he did enormously good work. So I want to send personally and also on behalf of all on and involved with this committee our sincerest condolences to his wife, another part of our family, councillor Lynda Wooton, and all of his family. And I would like to invite you now to join me seated, if you prefer, standing, if you will, in observing a minute's silence in memory of the friend that we have lost. Thank you very much, colleagues, please be seated. Colleagues, we have a particularly long and rich agenda this morning. That includes consideration of two pre-decision items. So I would like to begin by asking those presenting reports to take these as read by members and only summarise the key points and the type of input which is expected from the committee. Could I also remind all members, please, to be as succinct as possible in the questions that you put and the contributions you make. I'd also like to take the opportunity to welcome councillor Phil Dilks, who is with us in the chamber, and councillor Tracey Carter, who I understand is online. And they are respectively the chairman and vice-chairman of scrutiny panel A. And they're with us today to present item seven and discuss with members the outputs of the scrutiny review on Lincolnshire town centres. And we now move to executive councillor announcements. And starting with councillor Colin Davie, executive councillor for Economic Development, Environment and Planning, who I believe is joining us online. Councillor Davie.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good morning to you all. It's good to join you this morning and to see the packed agenda that you have in front of you today. I'm going to keep my announcements as short as I can. I'm particularly pleased to see the scrutiny panel's review on this agenda. I know that members have dedicated a great deal of time considering a very vast subject area and have looked to focus in on recommendations that Lincolnshire County Council can take the lead on. We have a range of wonderful towns across Lincolnshire which act as vital urban centres for our rural county. I know that we all recognise their importance and I'll be interested to hear the committee debate on this today. The work that we do to support the economy of our large villages and small towns can make a vast difference. The Suttonbridge Pacemaking Scheme in South Holland, which is also being considered by you today, is a perfect example of a small local economic development initiative designed to encourage greater spend with local businesses. The objective is to maximise the influence of the village's marina and other tourism assets to increase footfall to and from the village centre by creating better physical and visual links between the two locations. The scheme has been developed with the local community to ensure ownership and buy-in. I'm also very pleased to see that energy features on the agenda today. Our leadership role in the countywide Energy for Growth Agenda continues as part of our increased focus on the need for better infrastructure within our county. We're developing strong relationships with electricity distribution network operators to understand their plans across Lincolnshire to assist growth in areas, especially where supply is volatile or in some cases virtually non-existent. We are also increasing our understanding of the needs of businesses and communities for energy going forward in their business plans. In parallel, the Energy Options Analysis for Greater Lincolnshire Study and the next steps following from that, which the committee will also consider today, have made great strides in identifying current and future energy constraints and enabling the consideration of local innovative solutions to mitigate them. I'm very pleased to report positive feedback from the business sector with financial confidence remaining high within our growth businesses. Approximately one in six, 17% trading businesses, reported higher turnover in July 2023 compared to the previous month, marking a two percentage point increase from June 2023. This uptick is the first since March 23. And furthermore, businesses are reporting to the growth hub of showing positive financial forecasts, with over 80% now expressing confidence in their financial outlook. Of course, not all sectors are alike. And I'll turn now to what we understand about the season so far for the visitor economy. There are a variety of ways that we can sense-check how the tourism season is going, not least actually asking the businesses themselves. However, it is useful to look across the board to build up a picture. The figures for our Visit Lincolnshire website are an indicator of interest. And we can see the level of links through to bookings. The annual steam data reflects the whole calendar year and is very helpful. But we won't see the 2023 figures until the spring of 24. Throughout the school holidays, there are reports that city coast and countryside have been busy. But also that people are not spending at the levels they have previously done so. People have been taking day trips rather than full holidays. Retail is struggling particularly, and there's a lot of last-minute bookings and discounting. Although the economic situation is tough for the visitor economy, half visitor figures for Visit Lincolnshire go from strength to strength. The first eight months of the year have seen 1,664,000 page views, but that's up 44% from 2022. The conversion rate to a booking or download is an enviable 14.4%. The industry standard is around 5%. We continue to add new and improved contact, and this is helping to drive the traffic. We continue to refine our support offers to be able to help the sector get back on its feet through advisory support, promotion and product development. Elsewhere, in terms of inward investment, we continue to see high-quality investment inquiries across the energy and agri-food and tech sectors, many institutionally backed by investment management company vehicles. Foreign direct investment business engagement is good, with a number of acquisitions of Lincolnshire businesses fueling investment projects and growth in the county. Support for business continues to be provided by the Business Lincolnshire team with activity focused in those geographies that have contributed UK Shared Prosperity funding. Activity includes a new programme for entrepreneurs wanting to start in business, which is now live, and there are a number of other new programmes for manufacturing, the visitor economy and net zero that will be launching this month. The team are planning a going-global export conference in November, which will feature inspirational speakers and workshops to encourage increased international trade from new and existing exporters. The new academic year sees family learning getting off to a great start in schools and community venues across the county. In schools across Lincolnshire from Mablethorpe to Stamford, we have a wide variety for courses and workshops planned to support parents to help their children learn. In 2023-24, our directly delivered provision is broadening out to support those learners for whom English is not their first language. Building on the 92% achievement rate for functional skills, we're now offering accredited aim awards as a pathway to enable more residents to take advantage of these important learning opportunities. We are delighted to extend our functional skills delivery into work settings. It includes working with Great Food Service, where we are supporting learners to undertake functional skills in English and maths, progressing work, as well as apply for an apprenticeship. Similarly, we are working with the NHS Community Trust to deliver functional skills qualifications that support career progression, including on to nursing courses at the University of Lincoln. We also continue to provide great opportunities for businesses looking for a base. At the South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone near Holbeach, also in South Holland, private sector investment continues to follow on from this council's. A local food sector control and automation company has recently completed and is now occupying, occupying a bespoke facility, making this the fourth new building on the scheme. And a local developer is soon to start building speculative business accommodation on a further three plots. In addition, the council's new three-storey innovation centre, the Hub, which opened just 12 months ago, now has six tenants, over eight offices and two workshops. In East Lindsay, the Boston Road Industrial Estate Expansion Scheme in Horncastle has completed the outline design stage and is due to be presented to this committee in the autumn. The current estate is at capacity and there is demonstrable local demand for further spec. Across the county, we continue to support our small business tenants, which total around 150 in our five business centres, innovation centre and industrial and commercial units. Occupancy levels remain buoyant with a healthy mix of leased renewals and new tenants. Recognising how busy you are, Chairman, I now leave matters there, but welcome any questions if members have them. Thank you.
Colin, thank you very much indeed for that update. It is good to hear that there is an element of uptick in terms of business. It was very interesting also the comment you made on visitor numbers and yet constraints and spend. And I think both of those things do underline just how much a partnership with local government can be effective in helping business. Looking round the room, do we have any members who wish to make a comment? Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to councillor Davie for his brief report. I'd like to ask councillor Davie if he is aware of the Future High Streets Fund progress in Grantham. As you know, I wear another hat for economic development in Southcysteven, and there appears to be a bottleneck concerning the Future High Street Fund and specifically the Five Arm Roundabout and the market. These fall into councillor Richard Davies' ward, but currently there seems to be some kind of an impasse, which is concerning because the money needs to be committed by the end of March. And unless we get a wriggle on, that money's going to go back to government. And I'm sure that neither the county nor the district want that to happen. So I just asked councillor Davie if he would help me in squaring that circle or whatever the metaphor is. Thank you.
Councillor Davie.
Yeah, I'm very happy to meet with you, councillor Baxter. I suggest we maybe find a few minutes on Friday before the full council or afterwards just to have a conversation about this and hopefully we can rope in Richard Davies as well.
Thank you very much, Colin. Thank you, councillor Baxter. Do we have any other questions for councillor Davie in the room? I see none. I see that we also have executive councillor councillor McNally with us this morning. Do you wish to make a comment at this stage, councillor McNally, or hold your peace until later?
Yeah, I shall wait until later. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. In that case, we will move on to senior officers' announcements. Do we have any announcements at this stage in proceedings from the senior officers who are with us? I'm seeing a battery of senior officers, all of whom are shaking their head, so that again allows us to move on. Which means that we can now move to item five on our agenda, which is food waste disposal contract procurement. This report is to the executive councillor for, I beg your pardon, the report to the executive councillor for Waste and Trading Standards can be found on pages 15 to 24 of the agenda pack. And it considers a decision on the approval sought to procure a contract for the treatment of food waste via anaerobic digestion, including collection from waste transfer stations by the supplier. The decision is being considered by the executive councillor between the 18th and 22nd of September 2023. Our actions are as follows. Firstly, we're asked to consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendation to the executive councillor for Waste and Trading Standards as set out in the report. And secondly, that we agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive councillor in relation to this item. Now, the report was going to be presented by Mike Reid, the head of waste. Unfortunately, he is not able to be with us this morning. But we do have in the chamber Rachel Stamp, who I understand is going to present the item. So Rachel, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. So as you say, this report is in respect of the disposal of food waste going forward. The Environment Act 2021 proposes that we will have to dispose our food waste that will be collected on a weekly basis from all household by the waste collection authorities. That will amount to some 35,000 tonnes of municipal food waste per annum. In order to do this effectively and ensure that we are able to implement the changes that are required of us and not include any financial penalties, we're seeking to procure a contract at this point in order to dispose of the waste by anaerobic digestion. Anaerobic digestion is currently the leading technology around this, but we expect to allow the permissions within the proposal to look at more effective technologies should they come on board. The process by which we're looking to do this is the competitive procedure with negotiations. Having undertaken some significant market engagement, whilst we know that there are some provisions within the county at the moment to secure sufficient capacity for the 35,000 tonnes that we forecast we'll receive, what we do need to ensure is that we secure that ahead of all of the local authorities who are going to be in the same market as ourselves, along with the haulage of the materials from our transfer stations. We're proposing, as I say, to do this under the competitive procedure with negotiation because this is a new contract, it's not been done before, and we want to be able to work with the experts in the market to ensure that we get the right benefits and technologies and performance from this contract going forward. The 35,000 tonnes will obviously be coming out of the current residual waste that goes into the energy from waste at the moment. Current market indices indicate that there will actually be either a much reduced cost or indeed an income from food waste. So financially, this will be a much better route for us in a budgetary capacity than we're in at the moment. We are intending, having undertaken the market engaging, to set this out as one lot countywide, as that seems to be what the experts within the market are saying would be the most preferred methodology at the moment to procure the contract. And we're looking at this on a five-year contract with an extension potentially of two lots of two years, so up to a maximum of nine years, again making this more attractive to the market going forward. Having considered all of that then and worked with our colleagues within the procurement and legal teams, we're seeking the permission and the approval and any additional comments from you to proceed with the competitive procedure with negotiations and that will go to the executive councillor for decision. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for summarising the report and thank you for doing it thoroughly and concisely. That is exactly what we seek and well done on that. Before I come to members, I would just observe, of course, that we are to some degree working hypothetically because, surprise, surprise, the Environment Act's details still have not been published by central government. So we don't have an exact timeline for when this thing is going to come around the road. I personally think, committee members, I hope, will agree that it's absolutely right that we are thoroughly prepared for it. Before I move to the floor and invite questions, can I just put one of my own? And it is really a fundamental. My understanding of this business suggests that in our area anaerobic digestion is much the better option, not least because the digestate that is the result is a resource in itself. Other members may have questions on that. But can I just ask you about the point of going to the market? Have we examined whether creating our own central and council-owned anaerobic digestion facility was an option? Has that been looked at? And perhaps you could just talk to that briefly for us.
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, we have spoken to the market and we have obviously looked at all of the options in front of us. As you say, within Lincolnshire, we are rather fortunate in terms of the geography of the county. At this point, there is capacity already within the county that would suffice. There's nothing to say after the first contract being awarded that we wouldn't work through a business case to understand if it's the right thing to do. Obviously, we need to focus on waste minimisation as well as the highest priority in the waste hierarchy. So at this point, I think our focus would be minimising the amount of waste and food waste. We're basing our calculations on the current volumes of food waste that we have within the residual waste. We would obviously be looking to support this with engagement and education around waste minimisation anyway. And we don't actually know how many residents will actually partake in it. So I think at this point, we are looking to engage with a provider to take it. I would say that nothing's off the table and we would continue to examine the volumes that we've got going forward.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm reassured by that answer. And your point about waste minimisation, of course, includes waste miles. We do have these facilities already spread across our very large county, and it is important to minimise the number of trucks carrying food waste as and when this matter comes in. I look to the floor. Do we have questions? We have councillor Baxter first. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, to echo your comments and concerns about the gestation of the Environment Act. It seemed, I wonder if anybody has a crystal ball to say when the, no, the impact of the Environment Act will be known. It affects this paper, it affects everything we do as a waste collection authority, and it obviously affects all the waste disposal authorities within the district. We don't know how we are going to collect the waste if we don't know what waste we're supposed to be collecting. Nor do we know how we're going to pay for it because the impact on the district councils, and I dare say on the county, is going to be millions. And we don't, I assume, we don't yet know what the new burdens funding will be. We don't know what the new burdens are, let alone what the new burdens funding will be. And with a general election next year, I don't see that that question is going to be asked in readiness. I obviously welcome the preparation that we do as a waste disposal authority. That's only proper, but you're kind of working in the dark. And just to finish off, to say that we have had food waste collection in the past. It worked very well, the residents loved it, the outcome was great. It was on 10% of the residents of Southcysteven, but it eventually ran into the sand when the vehicle needed replacing. And not knowing what the future held for food waste, it would have been difficult to make a decision about an expensive vehicle for a waste service which is of uncertain future. We now face a bottleneck in terms of the supply of such vehicles. So I recognise this is a collection issue, not a disposal issue. But if 600 local authorities in the country all phone up the suppliers of food waste collection vehicles on the same day, that's going to be a bottleneck. But given that the funding, the new burdens funding, won't be available until the announcement is made, no authority in their right mind is going to go and start buying massive £100,000 vehicles if they don't have to. So it's a real problem and I share the frustration, I'm sure, of officers and, I dare say, the executive of how to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Baxter. I move now to councillor Skinner. Councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much, Chairman. You mentioned a large central facility. Be a lot better if it was local and we reduced the waste mileage as well as the food mileage. That's something that we really do need to be looking at. Few challenges on the way with the collected food. The calorific value of what you collect may not always be 100% consistent. So some big challenges in there to keep the concrete, the AD plant sweet, as the case may be. Probably a load more maize in there, who knows? Final point, sometimes in the past composting has been engaged as well. That's not without its challenges. The gases off it, melt circuit boards, et cetera. But I do wish good luck with the paper and let's hope we can chart a way forward. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I think we'd all agree with that. I'm looking to see if there are any further speakers. Excuse me. I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon, councillor Austin. I didn't see you there. Councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. Having only really recently reached
Having only really recently returned to this committee, obviously I don't know what I missed in previous years on this matter. How much research has been done, and I don't necessarily mean in nice places like South Castriven, to see how the public at large are going, you know, potentially going to take to this? My big fear is that the people who possibly have the most food waste are the people who are least likely to bother to separate it from their general waste. Just a not awfully charitable thought. Thank you.
Rachel, I understand beyond South Castriven, excellent though that, of course, is, there has been quite extensive use of this up and down the country. Would you like to comment on that, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, councillor Austin, I understand what you're saying. So in terms of the different demographics, certainly we've learnt over the twin stream rollout over the last two and a half years about the different demographics that we have around the county. Obviously, this will be a mandated service for weekly collection. So there will be an amount of engagement and education that will come from central government over that. We will, of course, look to build on that locally across the county as well and understand in those hard-to-reach areas how we maximise the take-up. In a perfect world, everybody would do what they were asked to do, wouldn't they? And we would maximise this. There'll be no way to mandate people to put out a food waste caddy. All we can do is actively engage, educate, continue with our messaging and our work to reduce waste, to minimise it and then to get people to reuse and recycle it going forward. If I had a magic wand, I would hope that everybody would comply. But again, what we are very well aware of now and have got a lot of experience of is engaging with different sectors of the county based on their demographic and meeting them at their place of need. So we'll continue to do that as we move forward.
Thank you very much, Rachel. I think it is just worth reminding ourselves that there is always and quite properly a level of scepticism whenever any change is made to waste collection and disposal arrangements. We think of that very much in the introduction of the paper and card collection, the purple-lidded bins. And yet where that has been introduced, uniformly there have been people saying, this will never work. And uniformly, we have found an extremely high level of participation and an extraordinarily high level of purity of what has been collected. And I think the people of Lincolnshire do engage and do understand the needs of our environment and have shown in the past that they have engaged. And I think the trial in South Castriven that councillor Baxter referred to underlines the potential for this. And let's remember, far better to use waste, food waste, as a means of generating sustainable energy rather than purpose-grown crops. Because we should remind ourselves that there are thousands of hectares of Lincolnshire which are currently growing crops purely to be turned into energy, which is, I guess, fine. But wouldn't it be preferable if we could substitute some of that with food waste and devote those hectares to actually growing crops of food? So I think I am now safe in saying I don't see any further members wishing to contribute. I'm sure our officers will record the key points which have come up. Those will be captured and passed on to the executive member, who is in any case listening in the corner. So I can move to the motion. I move that the committee supports this report and agree with the recommendation of the executive councillor and agree with the recommendations to the executive councillor. And I ask that our comments, as captured, be shared with the executive councillor for his consideration ahead of the decision being made. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Skinner, thank you very much indeed. That is seconded. We will now vote. Please show all in favour. Thank you very much. Any against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you very much indeed. We now move to item six on the agenda. Approval to procure contracts for haulage of household waste recycling centres exit waste streams, which has to be one of the longest titles of a paper we've come across for a long time. The report to the executive councillor for waste and trading standards can be found on pages 25 to 34 of the Agenda Pack and considers a decision on the council's haulage of household waste recycling contract procurement, which is due to expire on 31st of March 2024. This report sets out a proposed course of action, including a short extension to the existing contract, procurement of new contracts on a lots basis and delegation of the necessary decisions. The decision is being taken between the 18th and 22nd of September 2023 by the executive councillor. And our actions this morning include the following. Firstly, that we consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the executive councillor for waste and trading standards as set out. And secondly, that we agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive councillor in relation to this item. This report, as the last, was going to be presented by Mike Reid, who's unable to join us this morning. But it's back, I think, to Rachel Stamp. Rachel, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it is. So as you quite rightly said, this report is around the procurement of a contract for the haulage of exit streams, waste coming out of our 11 household waste recycling centres. As you quite rightly say, this is due to expire on the 31st of March, having been a contract that had been in place since 2017 previously. We are looking to procure a contract for five years initially, with the ability to extend for a further 12 months plus 12 months, so a total of seven years. The difference in terms of the work that we've done around engagement is that we propose that we will set this to the market as four lots across the county. The previous contract was awarded to one contractor across the whole of Lincolnshire. Having learnt a lot of lessons and understanding the market, we are seeking four lots where bidders may bid for all four but would be awarded no more than two lots for this. We're hoping that the pre-market engagement that we've done is telling us that potentially there are some smaller, medium-sized providers out there that will be looking to tender for such work. And that would also help us to give some resilience across the whole period of the contract rather than providing it to just one contractor. In terms of the procurement process, we're following procurement regulations in this. It's an open tender that we propose would go out with a quality weighting of 60%, so that we understand that the providers are able to work with us to provide the service that we need to. So this report in front of you is to ask you to consider that and provide any additional comments around the haulage of the waste from the household waste recycling centres to be put out. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I will start the questions on this one as I did last time. And it is a question about routing. Now, I appreciate that the vehicles involved here are not necessarily likely to be as large as those which supply, for example, the energy from a waste plant. But nevertheless, it does mean that we will have lorries buzzing around our district. And obviously, the routing of those lorries, particularly if they travel through rural areas and small villages, is quite a sensitive matter. So my question to begin with is whether consideration of routings can be built into the contract specification at the procurement stage so that we aren't faced, if problems do arise later on, by a problem which we don't have the flexibility in the contract to deal with. Rachel, could you address that one, please?
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, indeed. As part of the specification, we are writing in there that hauliers should take the most appropriate routes, minimising the carbon footprint and abide by the rules of the road, so weight limits, low bridges, et cetera, et cetera. With those routings through part of the contract management, we will look at those in terms of where the vehicles are travelling to ensure that we are meeting those requirements. I think it would be fair to point out that the waste from the household waste recycling centres, unlike our residual waste that goes to the energy from waste, actually is awarded to various suppliers and contractors. And that may change through the life cycle of the haulage. So we need to make sure that we have got the ability to be flexible in the specification. But whilst adhering to those points that you quite rightly make, my colleagues in procurement Lincolnshire have made sure that the relevant wording to the specification is included in there.
Thank you very much. I'm reassured on that. I think we next have councillor Bowles. Councillor Bowles, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I support the recommendations in the report. And I can only speak from my experience at Gainsborough Centre. And it's good to see that the report recognises the issue around the failure to collect waste streams because I can generally say that is the only complaint and issue I have raised about Gainsborough Centre, that if people rock up at a weekend very regular in the last few years, waste streams have been closed and they've not been able to get rid and they have to go home. And you can understand why people get angry. So it is good that that is the only thing that they generally moan about, but it has been a major issue in the last two years, so I'm pleased that's identified. And I think what you're suggesting in terms of splitting the contracts would go obviously some way to hopefully resolving that. But I would like to ask, is there a way of including within the contracts some scope of, you know, clawback or, you know, conditions that if things like this do occur, there are some consequences to the contractor?
Thank you, councillor Bowles. And yes, indeed. In terms of the mechanism for performance and payment, there are tolerances within there. That will be managed on a monthly basis. And where they're not adhered to outside of those tolerances, we all know there are always exceptions where something happens on Lincolnshire's roads. Where that becomes an issue, we'll be managing that contract and it'll become part of the performance monitoring framework.
Thank you very much for that answer and thank you for that question, councillor Bowles. Councillor Skinner, you're next.
Thank you, Chairman. Much like councillor Bowles, when we encounter problems in Boston, it's down to where the bins are full. I mean, some of this isn't unlike a system that you would run on a factory floor with stop, push-pull. So this ought to be considered in the contract. I mean, some of the requirements with coming up to bank holidays and we can actually predict the use and actually have stuff in, you know, bins empty and ready rather than... So if we've got a flexible contract, which it looks like it is, I am really happy and very supportive of it. But there are techniques out there which we can use to actually make things better. Thank you.
Yeah, Rachel, I would support that. I think we all in the committee appreciate the physical constraints of the recycling centres. Nevertheless, as councillor Skinner says, we all know in advance, as soon as the calendar is published, that for example, after a bank holiday or during a bank holiday and after a bank holiday, there's going to be a flurry and we do need to make sure that we can cope with that. Do you want to comment a little further on that?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Indeed, we do. And we look at all our bids every day, we ensure that they're sent through to our contractors. What we'll do is, what we do now is, in our best efforts to empty them all, we aren't in control of who turns up unfortunately with how much on the day. But we will do our utmost, as we do already, to manage this to ensure that we, you know, we're as prepared as we can be unfortunately. And a lot of it's down to the weather as well as the calendar. You know, the nicer the weather, the more people turn up. We can react as best we can. As you say, by letting this in lots, we're hoping to have more flexibility in there to be able to cover more of that off. We can never give 100% guarantee, but obviously the staff work really hard to ensure that we are as prepared as possible.
Thank you very much indeed for that. Did you want to come back on that one, councillor Skinner?
Yes, and I would just say that, you know, when I've used one of two sites that I visit, the staff are always helpful and they do their level best to provide an excellent service to the public. It's how we can actually support them by contract to do an even better job. Thank you, Chairman.
I think that is a point well made. I think that I'm particularly pleased to hear in this report is that rather than just automatically looking at one very big national supplier, we are looking at potentially a number of suppliers, we're looking at local suppliers. When we get any service or buy any product with public money, we have of course got to get best value. But I think it is always good to look locally where the supplier may be more engaged and provide better value for money. It is not always the case that the absolute cheapest is best because we have to get value, not just the lowest possible price. So I'm not seeing any more points from the floor. So I thank everyone for their questions and comments. And we now move to the proposal, which is to record obviously the comments which have been made. Those will be captured, those will be passed on. And I therefore can move that the committee supports the report and agrees with the recommendations to the executive councillor. And that I ask that our comments, as captured, be shared with the executive councillor for his consideration ahead of the decision being made. Do I have a second for that proposal? Councillor Skinner, thank you very much indeed. We'll now vote. All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much indeed. Any against? None against and any abstentions? And there are no abstentions. That is therefore agreed. We now move on to what I suspect will be a very large item on the agenda. Item seven, the town centre improvement scrutiny review. This report is on pages 35 all the way through to 144 of the Agenda Pack and summarises the findings of scrutiny panel A and presents six areas for its recommendations that are summarised on pages 42 to 44 of the attached draft report. And the actions before the committee this morning are as follows. The report invites us to consider approving the draft report attached to appendix A as the final report on town centre improvements for submission to the executive on the 3rd of October 2023. The report will be introduced by Kiara Hatzianu, our scrutiny officer and project lead for scrutiny panel A, and subsequently presented by councillor Phil Dilks, with the support, who is in the chamber, with the support of councillor Tracy Carter, who joins us online. Lead officers are Justin Brown, Assistant Director Growth, Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Investment, and Mandy Ram, Funding and Investment Manager. They will contribute to the discussion and take questions from members as required. So Kiara, I think we start with you. Over to you and then subsequently over to Phil Dilks.
Thank you, Chairman. This review was commissioned by the overview and scrutiny management board in September 2021, being one of the two topics allocated to scrutiny panels A and B respectively for the council year 2022/2023. A call for nominations was followed by the formation of the panel under the chairmanship of councillor Phil Dilks and the vice-chairmanship of councillor Tracy Carter. The panel consisted of councillors Stephen Bunny, Mrs Julie Killie, Noisyer, Adam Stokes and Mark Whittington. The key lines of inquiry for the scrutiny review agreed by the panel were: Number one, understanding challenges, changes in behaviour, shopping, land use and the impact of technology on the future of high streets across Lincolnshire and how that changes the infrastructure and services needed in town centres. Two, consider the delivery of existing town fund deals, future project pipelines and the ways in which the council could effectively support such changes and projects. Number three, examine how the council can support the needs of businesses, including retail and hospitality sectors in town centres, including hardships arising from the COVID-19 pandemic and the EU transitions. Number four, identify best practice of supporting green recovery on the high street. The panel met on 12 occasions between January 2022 and April 2023. A series of town, of site visits and workshops were also conducted throughout the duration of this review. We met with subject matter experts and consultants, leading LCC officers, and we commissioned engagement via survey with towns and parish councils as well as youth groups, which are all identified in the main body of the report, whilst reviews are being captured in detail on appendix F of the report. So this report is the output of the efforts of scrutiny panel A. And I should like to now pass on the baton to the chairman of the panel to present the review in more detail. Councillor, Mr Phil Dilks.
You're very kind. Good morning, all. Thank you, Mr Chairman, for your welcome to this committee. Thank you, Kiara, for your valued support and guidance to the panel over the period. And first, may I welcome the comments councillor David, the executive member, made at the start of the meeting on business recovery, the importance of our town centres to Lincolnshire's economy and particularly to the visitor economy. Mr Chairman, when the council leader councillor Hill generously invited me as an opposition councillor to chair what he called a deep scrutiny panel, I wasn't quite sure what to expect. As an elected councillor variously at parish, district and county levels over 25 years, I have to confess, I've never been a great fan of meetings not being held in public. But after 14 months of work...
14 months of work in private sessions, I'm first to acknowledge the real value of these deep scrutiny panels, which sees members from across the chamber working together with frank contributions by senior officers to think with no holds barred, outside the envelope and seriously examining problems that we come to realise are mostly common to us all. So I'd like to recognise the excellent support, professional advice and guidance in our discussions of the senior officers you particularly mentioned in opening the this item, particularly Justin Brown, Vanessa Strange and Mandy Ram, as well as we've had superb external experts and partners who contributed to what I hope you conclude is a wide ranging, challenging, robust set of recommendations, yes, over 100 pages, to support the future of our town centres and high streets as diverse, welcoming places to shop and do business, but also increasingly in our post pandemic world, as centres for leisure activities or just good places to be, relaxing with friends perhaps over a coffee. I personally wish to thank my vice chairman of the panel, councillor Tracy Carter, who brought a wealth of relevant knowledge learned from her promotion of pioneering initiatives to help deliver extra footfall in her own town of Holbeach. You'll see our report recognises how high streets are changing, not just as a consequence of the pandemic, which fast tracked online shopping. As my daughter, a working single mum of four children, told me and continues to tell me, she no longer needs to go to the shops, the shops come to her. The ongoing cost of living crisis is also clearly impacting on people's spending habits. Overall, footfall has undoubtedly decreased and spend in many cases in town centres has reduced. As councillor Davies said earlier, retail is struggling. Happily, some of our towns are still doing rather well in the face of this change, especially those who've chosen to embrace their uniqueness and offer compelling reasons why people should visit and spend time and money in their town. From making the most of local heritage assets to freshly to fresh hospitality offers or independent retailing, evidence we heard convinced the panel that our market towns and high streets present unique opportunities to promote the wider economy of our great county. We engaged with surveys, best practice reviews, in depth case studies, and we focused on developing a series of recommendations before you, which we believe the county council in its role as place leader, convenor, influencer can have a real impact on improving and helping our town centres. We believe there are opportunities to capitalise further on our wonderful visitor economy, working with the business community in sync with key stakeholders to create an environment which builds on what town centres already have, diversifies where need where needed, innovates and brings the public, private and third sectors together to help create thriving, resilient, dynamic, accessible town centres and high streets. Critically, the panel believes, taken together, our recommendations will help, could help, integrated and place based improvements to be delivered, support new and existing businesses and create and safeguard employment. I don't propose to go through the 100 pages plus page by page, you'll be pleased to hear. But there are clearly priorities in our recommendations. In a nutshell, bringing, they are bringing existing resource together within the within growth to identify and offer a single point of contact for towns to contact and engage with the county council. A business support programme to help high street traders, a regular dialogue between town centres and the county council, whether that would be a transport board or a pilot with just a handful of towns initially is up for debate, or perhaps some other approach to achieve this. And a small budget, perhaps 10 or perhaps 20,000 pounds initially for councillors to use on a first come, first served basis for activities that they believe will achieve more footfall in their high streets. I'd like to explain a little of our thinking around the priorities, these priorities, hopefully without diminishing diminishing the importance of other other recommendations. First, we agree the blindingly obvious, all our towns across Lincolnshire are unique. They're all different. There's no silver bullet. There's no one size solution fits all. But we do need to embed cooperation, collaboration, coordinated activity that recognises the strength and those unique qualities of our towns across the county. So our first recommendation is to utilise a mechanism already in place, suggesting that the county council holds yearly meetings with each of the eight local transport boards, which already cover many of our towns, our market towns, and comprise of local players with the knowledge and remit to effect positive change in their own areas by breaking down barriers and being accountable for locally delivered actions. From traffic regulation orders to walking and cycling, we recognise how important it is that people need to be able to not just get to the towns, but to be able to move around them when they do. As well as transport related issues, we ask that these annual meetings have a have an expanded remit, for example, the importance of plans to use to the use of local amenities. Can I just say, we're not looking for a talking shop here. These meetings need to be action focused and monitored for effective delivery and impact. As I'm sure we all agree, businesses are the key driver of town centre success, particularly when well informed and engaged. So in recommendation two B, we propose the creation of a single point of contact within the county council to support business. Much of the expert advice the panel heard confirmed our survey responses and centered on the perception that business businesses largely see the county council as a huge confusing organisation, resulting in barriers to engagement such as and comments such as, I don't know where to start. I don't know who to speak to first, even a suggestion that public and private sectors speak different languages. While we need clearly to work closer together, all for the same aims, we clearly first need to understand each other. And so for the county council, an accessible conduit would promote better understanding of the business perspective, particularly in relation to regulatory services and the impact of town centre decisions on business. So a single point of contact, a visible entry point for businesses to raise concerns and seek information. It could avoid wasting their time, businesses' time and our time, provide consistency, help build knowledge, relationships and trust, give confidence to businesses that they are able to access timely and relevant responses and crucially demonstrate that the county council attaches huge importance to our market towns and high streets. It could also mean, it could also be a useful contact for elected members to get updates and actions. It's not anticipated that this single point of contact would necessitate a new post, but within growth, there's already links to development management, digital economic development, et cetera, and a knowledge of current town activity. Moving on, recommendation three covers place making, funding and skills. The panel cannot over emphasise the importance of effective place making. Cohesive and collaborative action to place to help a place develop its potential must proactively engage local business and residents and pay careful attention to design, accessibility, services, connectivity and infrastructure. Done well, design excellence is championed and local character champions local character and distinctiveness is celebrated as the core of what we call place. As part of this, the panel is recommending that funding is made available to locally elected members to support activities that contribute to high quality, well used places by drawing people in and increasing footfall to make town centres the places to be. This should align to the town centre work of the local transport boards mentioned earlier. Again, the emphasis of the recommendation is about joining up and integrating activity and delivering cost effective solutions that generate interest and best practice. Our fourth recommendation centres on technology to digitise the high street. Pilots, we saw pilots identified in Holbeach and Mablethorpe in particular, and it's recommend these are further developed. They form two different approaches and use virtual immersive reality. I move on to recommendation five, data driven decision making and target investment. The value of the pilots in Mablethorpe and Mablethorpe, as I said, needs to be reviewed and evaluated to identify potential opportunities to roll this work out further across the county. Our final recommendation is around green growth and emphasises the interconnectivity of the visitor economy and the future vitality of high streets and market towns. Key to this is to support a green hospitality and independent retail how to do it guide and toolkit, helping small businesses understand how they can operate in a more environmentally conscious way and positively influence their suppliers and their customers. Finally, may I mention one of the first recommendations the panel agreed on was the glaring need for more resources to be to be devoted to deal with traffic regulation orders. Local members usually know the area they are elected to represent better than most. But almost all members on the panel recounted frustrations with a backlog that was that was delaying actions to enable improvements to town centres and traffic flow and parking by up to two years. I'm delighted to say that the panel was beaten to it and extra extra resources were put into this this year's current budget. And I was assured as recently as yesterday by Richard Fenwick, the senior officer responsible for delivering TROs, that the backlog is now falling rapidly. That is really welcomed. This sits well with the focus of all our recommendations. To conclude, we're about delivering effective approaches to enable town centres to work to promote green and safe travel and make places that are accessible, vibrant, add to our economy and work with all our partners to achieve this. Thank you for listening, Mr Chairman. May I commend this report to you and your committee? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Dilks. Before I move to members on the floor, we have online councillor Carter, who was the vice chairman of the committee of the panel. Tracy, is there anything you want to add or should we just go straight to questions?
Happy for it to go straight to questions at this stage. Thank you, chairman.
Thanks very much, Tracy. In that case, we'll move to the floor. And I think our first question is from councillor Hague.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for the report, Phil. It's really good and it's it seems to cover an awful lot of the angles. My concern on trying to rejuvenate town centres is that the business rates that each of the units has to pay and that that they have to get an awful lot of income in to cover the business rate. So I would have thought the business rates would be one of the the highest issues of trying to rejuvenate centres. I'm all for green travel, but if I'm going into town for shopping, I'm not going to be on a bike or walking. I want to use I want to use a car or really good reliable public transport. And I don't see that in many of the centres across Lincolnshire. So those are my comments for that. Thank you.
Councillor Dilks, would you like to come back on this?
I'd very much happy to. Thank you, councillor Hague, for the question. I've got to say, we didn't go in deeply into business rates. And I think if we had come back with a recommendation on reducing business rates, we might well have been knocked out of the park before we started. We tried to be as practical as possible and looking at ways that we could get people to work together to achieve some of the problems. I do recognise that problem, of course. On the on the transport, I recognise, of course, that the very nature, the geography of Lincolnshire makes the car vital to many of us. But increasingly in planning terms, I welcome the move to the buzzword connectivity of in in making, you know, new housing estates actually easy to connect into your local community, not not just with footpaths, but with cycle routes as well. And if we don't do that, we won't encourage people to get out of their cars, meet some of the climate change challenges and reduce carbon emissions. Thank you. I'm happy for if you would, chairman, invite. We've got, I know we have Vanessa and Tracy, of course.
Do officers have anything to add to that? I'm not, but we do have a comment from online councillor Carter.
Thank you, chairman. I think it's important, the environmental angle that we was looking at wasn't actually just about transport as well. So that toolkit, that how to guide is actually working with businesses to be more environmentally conscious. So this could be in regards to selling toiletries in refills rather than using bottles again, paper bags, working with businesses to help them get deliveries in an efficient way, block purchasing, that kind of thing. So working with them to then do that toolkit and then also use that as a promotional tool, because our residents are very conscious of being environmentally conscious. So actually, they are very keen to support businesses that have that interest and care for our world. So actually promoting that and using that as another tool to market themselves as well. So I fully appreciate your comment in regards to the transport. And obviously, in our rural area, that's difficult. But for us, the angle we took, the environmental angle was was much, much wider than just about the transport. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Tracy. That's an extremely interesting and I think a very important comment. We now move to councillor Skinner. Councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much, chairman. I've thank you very much for the report, councillor Dilks and councillor Carter. You're very right, there's not one magic bullet to sort this out. And to a certain extent, doesn't matter whether it's a business or whether it's a town centre, things that fail to change and evolve actually die. And although we seem to have lots of Facebook heroes that want to live in the 60s and 70s, unfortunately, if the economic drivers aren't there to sustain the business, they don't survive. And from that point of view, there's several challenges. I mean, most most of us will have Wilcos and my heart goes out to the employers of of Wilco's. But but you have so many discount stores that they're actually even affecting our marketplaces because those discount stores are actually challenging the existence of the traditional market store. The only other comment I've I've got, there is a real good example of what can be done. Louth is a really vibrant town. It has lots of individual shops rather than big, big names, and it actually does a real good job. Now, under my leadership at Boston, we were very successful in bringing in monies with the town deal and levelling up. They now move into a harder phase in delivering. In delivering that, my opinion on delivering economic regrowth is you don't take government money and just spend it, you actually make it so it regenerates again. And that is the big challenge. It takes a little bit of vision and forethought, but I hope all of the places that have been lucky enough to to land a levelling up funding towns deal, and certainly Boston Town Board is an excellent board, and tying it into the university with its 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 food expertise and the college to provide skills to add anything that's that's coming in. It ticks all the boxes of actually getting, but it's actually what we need to be doing. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Do you wish to come back on that, Phil, or should I move on?
Only to say, I thoroughly agree with you, Paul, on Louth. There's something about Louth. I worked there as a young journalist 50 years ago as chief reporter of the Louth Standard, no less. And, you know, what a great town Louth was then, is now, and I'm sure will continue to be so. It has just got something, Louth, and it's it's alive, it's vibrant. And, you know, there are lessons to learn from Louth. Thank you.
Yes, before moving on, and I don't want this debate to turn into a just just a praise session for Louth, but I'm actually going to join in. I think one of the things that I think one of the things that makes Louth different is the way it has a tremendous richness of locally-based independent retailers who have an attraction and a commitment by their customers and to their customers, which perhaps sometimes goes beyond what we might expect from some of the national chains who dominate some high streets. And also, Louth is really integrated with its hinterland. Look at the number of independent stores selling fruit, vegetables, game for heaven's sake. All sorts of things are available there that come from the surrounding countryside and that is what we expect of a market town in a largely rural area like our own. However, we will move on. Next on the list, councillor Bowles, you've waited patiently.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I thank the scrutiny panel for all of the hard work. I know from speaking to councillor Bunny, the amount of work that the members of that committee have put in, so I thank everybody for that. An agree with the comments of the two previous speakers, I was going to raise a couple of them, so I won't drag, bring them back up again. Just a question we had, was it raised during the working group that other town centre areas are experiencing massive issues with absent landlords and see that as a major problem? And just in Gainsborough, we sort of, for want of a better phrase, we seem to, we have two town centres now. We have Marshalls Yard and we have the historic town centre. Marshalls Yard is obviously owned by a business, they promote all of their units, it does have a churn, but there's never anything empty, as councillor Skinner alluded to. Wilko's will be empty in the next couple of weeks, but they do have a reputation of filling them constantly, whereas the old town centre, West Lindsay, really struggled to engage with the landlords of those properties, they derelict, they run down, they can't get them to maintain them, push tenants. So I just wondered if that had been raised and is an issue elsewhere that could have been looked at. And then my second one is more of a comment and observation really regarding the recommendation one and the local transport boards. Obviously, we have the local transport board in Gainsborough and for the last two years, whilst we've been discussing the town centre in Gainsborough, the LCC position and the West Lindsay position have been at complete loggerheads in terms of what they believe is the right way to develop that town centre. So I'm just, I'd be interested in councillor Dilks' opinions about how in situations like that, we can come together when the two positions are very different and we have just, we've grown to a halt and we are at complete loggerheads, you know, to the, you know, West Lindsay have got 16 million pounds of levelling up fund for a project in the town centre, which is completely different to what LCC members and I will say businesses are saying they want. So we have been at complete loggerheads. So whilst, you know, it sounds good what you're saying in terms of come together and work like that, ours is an example of where that isn't working.
If I may, Chairman, thank you. Thanks for those comments. I don't know Gainsborough that well, so I appreciate what you say about the empty shops. I didn't look in huge detail at the empty shop challenge. The only thing I would say about that, if I may, is the importance of place-making comes back to it and the importance of town centres themselves. From my experience in the deepings, you know, we recently had a big, quite a popular application for a supermarket on the edge of town, just out of the town. I have to say, I go to, I shop at one of those supermarkets, an elderly or little, is it, I can't remember, on the edge of Borne. But you know what? I never go into Borne after I've done my shopping. If that new town, if that new supermarket is built in your town centre, you are inevitably promoting football within your town centre. And I just think those are so important. You know, it's, I accept what you say and I understand what you say in districts not working with counties, but you know what? We've got to. There's just no alternative. If we're going to achieve and show people how to do it, it has to be in partnership. It just has to be. We have to find ways through that, through our political differences. And that's why I'm grateful that in this work that we've done, hopefully, it's, you know, we got together in rooms and politics didn't come into it, I'm pleased to say. And sometimes we have to remove the politics. Thank you.
I think councillor Carter online would like to just add a response to you as well, councillor Bowles. Councillor Carter.
Thank you again, Chairman. Again, I would confirm with councillor Dilks that actually all of the people came from, obviously, across the county. And absent landlords wasn't something that got bought up a great deal, so I'm sorry that you are having that challenge there. In regards to the transport board conversations, I think what I'd like to add is we did look at if it was right to have a different forum for these town centre focuses, but actually what we didn't want it to be is to make too many more boards, too much more work. So we felt the transport board was the right place for it. Again, I'm sorry that you're having those challenges. In South Holland, I must say that county and district do work very well together. I would say that for these meetings, we would be asking that there really is a different town centre focus for that one a year on these transport boards. So that may bring different people into those meetings in your area, so it may change that shift a little bit and help that relationship a little bit more. We have really tried throughout all of this report to be incredibly inclusive and respectful of the work that the district councils do across the board because it's really important that we do all work together. So I hope with that different focus for the transport boards in your area, that that maybe runs a little bit smoother for you for these town centre focused ones. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracey. I'll just add a comment myself on that. Given the issues or the difficulties that you've reported councillor Bowles regarding Gainsborough, it might just be worth an off-grid conversation with relevant executive councillors to see if things can be moved forward. I did have something that occurred to me when I read the report, just relating to the transport boards. So if colleagues will forgive me, I'll interrupt the flow slightly and just raise the point now. And that was simply, are we absolutely confident with that recommendation, which I think is recommendation one and 42 regarding the transport boards, that these matters actually fall within the formal remit of the local transport boards? Is there any risk that we might be at risk of duplicating or delegating responsibility in the wrong way or at the wrong level? Are we absolutely sure that this is the right forum? And I totally accept, by the way, the point you made, Phil, about let's not duplicate things if there's an existing forum that can be used, but constitutionally, we're happy that that is the right way forward.
I'm advised that we are safe with that recommendation. I'd be happy to invite Vanessa if you'd back us up on that, Vanessa, I'm sure. But as you say, throughout, Mr Chairman, we try to be cost-conscious, you know, not sort of spending a lot of money. We knew there's, you know, times are tight in local government and we look for best value recommendations. Thank you.
Very laudable. Vanessa.
Yes, to reassure you, Chairman, we have checked that matter, thank you, in terms of the scope of the transport board and we believe that we're in a comfortable space with that and have also spoken to the executive member on that matter as well.
That's excellent. In that case, we can move on and thank you for that reassurance. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Dilks for the report. We're in a funny situation of scrutinising scrutiny and I wonder who's scrutinising our scrutiny of the scrutiny and so on. Yes, we don't have to get into the detail of it. It's a great report and obviously very heavily researched, a very deep dive. It's almost the Mariana Trench of town centres in Lincolnshire. The world has changed. We now have home shopping and up and down my road, we see Royal Mail, Every, Amazon, almost more delivery vehicles than residents. And that leaves the high street with coffee shops, barbers, tattoo parlors, bridal gown shops and estate agents. They are, with one exception, they are the things that you can only really do, they're the things that you can't do online. You can't get a tattoo online, you can't get your haircut online, you can't have a cup of coffee with your mate online and it's difficult to get a bridal gown home on a pushbike. The estate agents is a mystery. I have no idea how estate agents continue to dominate our town centres. But I agree with what councillor Skinner said, the world has changed. Retailers have noticed, but many, many people on Facebook and elsewhere haven't noticed and don't notice until they try to deposit a cheque into the bank, which is getting further and further away. Yet towns and cities are where most people live and so those facilities are very much needed. I don't know if there's any comments about street markets. I've looked through and the future of street markets is a different but related aspect of the future of town centres because we get very emotional about our street markets of 1,000 years of age or more and how they will survive the next 10 years, let alone the next 100 years. But certainly we, as districts and county, should be concentrating on that. This whole issue isn't something that will be fixed in a political cycle, more likely fixed in a generation. If we, charming though it is, Suttonbridge is not Stamford and nowhere is Louth. And if we want to turn Suttonbridge into Louth, that's a challenge, I guess, over a generation and I welcome the recommendations for it. My final question would be about the integration of local authority tiers. I know the town councils are passionate about their towns and the districts see it as their remit to do towns and we clearly do too. How does the scrutiny envisage that those links will be formed and galvanised and copper-plated? Thank you.
Councillor Dilks, do you wish to come back on any of that?
I think I would just say, if I may, Mr Chairman, thank you for those comments on street markets. That is the part, that is part of the uniqueness of many of these small towns and it's for them to judge whether or not, you know, promoting a market is going to bring more football into their town as it does in, as we, not so much in Louth again, but there we go. But, you know, we're also talking about, you know, the uniqueness of each town and using the assets, perhaps the heritage assets within and close to their town to, you know, perhaps even promote festivals, events, you know, special weeks that are themed, those sorts of things, bring people into towns, into town centres and then promote local business and football. That's all I'd say on that. I don't know if Vanessa or Tracy would like to add anything. Thank you.
Vanessa.
Conscious that one of the most passionate people we heard from on that subject was councillor Carter in terms of the work that she's done in Hole Beach, so she may well want to take the floor with this, if we may, Chairman.
Tracey, we're going to drag you in here.
Literally. So this, for me, this is about that pot of money that's available and this is where some really good workings can happen with parish, with county councillors as individuals in their area. So I would just like to share maybe a couple of examples of things where that fund that would be available may be useful to you as county councillors in your area, particularly if you aren't district councillors and have any availability to funds there. So for example, I held a flash shop day in Hole Beach, so a particular shop was voted on by residents, so it engaged them. They picked a shop, that became my focus for basically a week and a half. Within that, I promoted it, I went and done a video which showed on Facebook Live, just designed little tiny leaflets, stood at the market all day long and I wanted people to come from the market to experience that shop. And it literally was me handing out leaflets, you know, they're doing a raffle, go see them, go to that shop. This was bringing longevity for this shop because they weren't new visitors to that shop just on that one day, they became visitors forever, they kept wanting to return. Those few hours work of me and the cost of probably 50, 60 pounds, which I did pay for myself, but that cost of 50, 60 pounds literally could come from this pot and it actually brought over 100 customers in for a shop when they would normally probably experience 25 in a day. But those 100-plus customers, 94 of them actually made a purchase as well. They hadn't been in this shop before. So these small initiatives can be carried out and that fund will really enable it to happen. Another quick example, I'm very conscious of time, but is I completed the Hearts of Hole Beach Award. So again, the cost of this, some businesses sponsor just 50 pounds. In excess of the sponsorship, it cost about another 90 pounds. It created a whole online award ceremony, which actually had 5,000 viewers. It championed the good businesses, it championed the service, it championed the newcomers. So it was lots and lots of activity for them as businesses and got additional coverage in the newspaper. So there are some amazing initiatives that actually can really make a difference and councillor Baxter in regards to sort of bringing in those parish councils. So yeah, anything like that, I think, is really important and we have got a part to play in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracey, and I think those comments absolutely underline the importance of local enthusiasm, local involvement and the provision of skills to the local level. And if we have skills of the sort that we have just heard about, that we as a county council can encapsulate and spread and disseminate that to other people who can use them across our county, so much the better. I'm going to move on now to councillor Spratt.
Thank you, Chairman. I was intrigued by councillor Baxter's comment that he goes for a haircut, a tattoo and then for a cup of tea. I'm not sure which order he really does it in, but I thought that was a rather nice thing that he said. I think the thing is, what councillor Dilks said about not being political, this, whatever one's politics or non-party politics, there's elements of pragmatism involved here. I mean, I, like many of my colleagues, we believe in free markets and such like, but if it was left entirely to the free market, high streets probably would die and shopping centres on outskirts would thrive and the city and town centres and communities would literally die. And I think what councillor Dilks emphasised in the report and councillor Carter, which I thought was an excellent and outstanding report, in fact, very thorough and comprehensive, was the partnership between the public and private sector. And I think it's all right saying, well, you've got government money, but how do you spend it? And it needs to be spent in order to regenerate business and such like and obviously councillor Bowles in fact mentioned a slight issue there, didn't he? One or two colleagues have spoken, have already mentioned things that I was going to mention specifically, I was going to ask a question about TROs, but that's already been dealt with. But something else councillor Baxter mentioned, which I do agree very strongly, and that is one point, rather than repeating things, it's the number of banks closing. Because as it correctly says in the report, banks are shutting all over and there is a serious disadvantage to people who are perhaps elderly, disabled and such like. And for example, if you look at Mablethorpe, not a bank at Mablethorpe at all now. If you look at Sutton-on-Sea, not a bank at Sutton-on-Sea. I know Cleethorpes is not within our remit as such, but not a single bank at Cleethorpes. And yet with interest rates being as high as they are, the banks are raking in massive profits. And that's a free market issue and it's a pity we can't do something to try and persuade banks because some banks, I think councillor Dilks would agree, they're sort of getting together, aren't they, like having one bank that represents several banks or something. Of course, post offices shut in and that. So I think this is a really good, good report. As I say, there are some, I think the other point that was made as well, absentee landlords. And I was particularly impressed with that bit in the report. And I think we need, it's already been, the point has been made about encouraging landlords to do their duty by the public and accept social responsibility. So I do agree with councillor Baxter on that as well. It's quite interesting, I can't remember a time when we didn't agree on some of the things, councillor Baxter. So general comments really, but I don't know if councillor Dilks wants to comment. Thank you, Chairman.
Phil.
Absolutely agree, Hilton. Thank you. Partnership and understanding the other view, you know, not just in politics but, you know, with the businesses, with the business community and the third sector is absolutely crucial, you know, and we, you know, at district level, county, at all levels, we have to go out and engage with those other views, hear them, listen to them and put ways forward that we can, you know, discuss with our partners. ways forward that we can, you know, discuss with our partners, because they are partners, in achieving what we want to achieve, is what we all want to achieve, you know, a much more vibrant, or as vibrant as possible, town centres across Lincolnshire. Banks, absolutely, I mean, banks just tells you, you know, about the changing nature, the nature of high streets. I really welcome what you said, and I would welcome more of these banks that are beginning to work together, I understand, to sort of offer a service where those services have been lost. We've got big towns, as you say, Cleethorpes, I didn't realise Cleethorpes hadn't got a bank, but, you know, if towns that size are not losing banks, it's, you know, it's a real problem, and hopefully this report will help improve things in our high streets. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, and councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, there's an awful lot to take in on this, and I'm just going to comment on a few things. Picking up first of all on one of the most recent ones mentioned about absentee landlords. I know councillor Skinner will know exactly what I mean when I say what I'm about to say, absentee landlords. How many of you are aware that the bulk of the shops in Boston Marketplace are owned by pension funds? And that means that that's one more, you know, one more property, if you like, on a huge list that they own. Do they realise that that, in Boston, Lincolnshire, can't be paying the same, expecting to get, what's the word I want, get the same rent from, you know, as it would if you were in some much more upmarket or affluent part of the country? You know, it's, this absentee landlords, when it's something like pension funds, it kills really, because nobody can afford those shops anymore, to have their shop there. Sorry, I haven't been very articulate on this. So that's the first one I wanted to make. Now, banks, right, we still got some banks, but is this lack of a bank gradually pushing us into a cashless society? Just a question for you to think about. The actual market, and I know I'm looking at a town which wasn't on your list, but Boston theoretically is a market town, but it's expanded to include now neighbouring villages in all directions, upwards fishtough, downwards, almost, well, certainly, you know, it's, this expansion, it alters the whole, almost the whole ethos, the whole atmosphere of a town, because of course, people don't necessarily work in the town, they, some people live there, but it's losing its heart because it's now got, you know, you've got all these supermarkets now on the fringes, not in the town centre. Now, I wish I could just wave a magic wand and say, right, that's the problem, but I won't know where we start with this. I looked at a photo of, a picture in, whether it was the news or something, in the Boston Marketplace. The flourishing market of a few years ago is down to virtually nothing, and what did I spot? One big notice on a stall saying vape. Is that what our markets are there for? You know, we should be selling local produce like we used to, but the supermarkets have sort of taken that, packaging it, packaged it all, and you get it in a plastic bag, and... So I'm at a total loss as to where we go for this. I certainly think there's a huge amount in this report that I'm going to probably use as bedtime reading for the next month. Interestingly, we had a briefing and discussion at Boston Borough Council last night on economic development. Right, well, thank you for listening to my rant, but we've got to do a lot to keep hold, and certainly you towns like Hole Beach, and so on, Louth, Horn Castle, you must keep your towns as distinct towns, not a semi-urban sprawl, and keep your markets as markets. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. I don't know if you need to come back, Phil. If not, I've got, before I move to sum up, I'm not seeing any other speakers from the floor, before I move to sum up, I've got a couple of points which I'd just like to put on record, respond if you will, but you don't have to, but I would like them on record. We've already mentioned the issue of the competence of the transport boards, and I'm really relieved by that answer. Just three others. In relation to recommendation two C, which is on page forty-two of the agenda, which talks about business support, and this council has a very proud record, and indeed it's the subject of this committee's scrutiny, in the assistance we give to businesses. That is also a responsibility with the district councils, and I'm just wondering how we ensure that there isn't duplication of effort, but that we somehow manage to get a lens which means that recipients are receiving the advice they need in the most efficient way. I'll put my three in, and then if you wish to comment, you may, Phil. In relation to recommendation three, really all of the subsections there concern place-making. I would just gently remind, and I'm sure this has occurred to those of us who are dual-hatted in this place, that we should not rule out, the wording does not overtly include local planning authorities, which is a different tier of local government to ourselves. It's absolutely clear in everything that you and Tracy have said, Phil, that inclusion is very much the watchword of this report, but I just flag that that wording might be made a little bit more inclusive, or at least an attachment to the recommendation could go forward, because we do want to make sure that everybody who has a role to play is on board and singing on the same hymn sheet. And finally, regarding recommendation five, the data-driven decision-making, I'm just wondering who would lead that, and who would manage the data, the management of data being a phenomenally sensitive topic at the moment. Those were the ones that I just wanted to add. Again, you may or may not wish to comment on those, Phil.
Thank you, thank you for those points, Mr Chairman. I mean, certainly on the duplication, it is something we tried and we're very conscious of, A, avoiding duplication, but B, not stepping on the toes, if I might put it that way, of district councils. They have clearly got responsibilities, but so have we, and again, it's like working with all partners, the need to work with districts and not against them, you know, in cooperation, collaboration, and all those other buzzwords, is just so important. You used the word inclusion, I'm glad you did, that is, you know, it's just so important. On the second point, yeah, I absolutely accept the wording, you know, yes, we've toyed over that, we've worked over the wording, but of course, that's why we're here today, you know, for you to say, what about that, and that wording may well be benefited from being tweaked or changed slightly with an addition, or if we can slightly change it as we go. On the data, I think I'd be happy to ask Vanessa if you'd comment on that. Vanessa?
Vanessa, I think you wanted to come in anyway, on that item or any others your comments were.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I think reflecting on those three points, in terms of business support, I'm very conscious that we're also joined in the chamber by my colleague Samantha Harrison to my right. Samantha's reported on a number of occasions to this committee on the work that she does and her team do around business support, and I know feedback from this committee and the work that she does is very cognisant of working with districts where we are able to do so and not to duplicate. In terms of the place-making, recognise the point made in terms of making sure that language is inclusive. I think the reason perhaps that we focused on the upper-tier authorities, if we should use such a word, was very much with an eye to devolution and making sure that this whole agenda is really thought about in that Greater Lincolnshire sense. So if we've inadvertently not shown the, you know, how inclusive we wish to be, that's perhaps something that members may wish to reflect on before taking the report to exec. In terms of being data-driven, you're absolutely right, I'm very heavily involved with the work we're doing around electric vehicle charging, for example, at the moment. A huge amount of pieces of paper to sign in terms of making sure that any data we use is for the appropriate use and kept appropriately. However, we've got this amazing tool now at our fingertips, and certainly we'll see it in other papers on the agenda today, energy and others, where we've got more knowledge to help us be informed about the decisions we take. So very much the committee felt that that was something that we should reflect on heavily, and we heard about. The only other point that I wish to add, if I may, Chairman, was just picking up on the issues around place-making and absent landlords. Very conscious that councillor Diltz started, introduced this paper by talking about this authority as a place leader, a convenor, an influencer, and one of the roles that my team undertake is around spatial planning, working with those local planning authorities, but also in terms of pressing government around things like the Planning Reform Bill, making sure that our rural voice is heard, and very much, we pulled the work that the panel were doing into our thinking around recent work that we've done, particularly responses to things like the Planning Reform Bill, making sure that Whitehall hears some of the messages that we hear in this chamber and elsewhere. I hope that helps. Thank you.
It helps a very great deal, and I'm grateful for those comments, and I think your point about place-making is crucial, because all of us in local government, be it at county, be it at district, or indeed be it at parish, have a crucial role to play in place-making. Somebody once raised the issue of what is planning for, which I have a professional involvement in, and I said it's to make places better, and if you think about it, that is precisely the role of local government. You could add, if you want to move beyond a three-word slogan, make places better for people, but I'm treating those as implicit, because that is actually what we're here for. Turning to the report, I would join colleagues in thanking Phil and Tracy, and all the people, members on the panel and all the officers who've served to make the report what it is, and of course, all those people who've given evidence to you in your work. It is tremendously thorough piece of work. I think the quality of the debate and the range of the debate that we've had this morning emphasises both the importance of the subjects that you've raised, and indeed the importance which this committee, and I'm sure this whole council attaches to them. It's an extremely important area, and I think you've done a very great deal of work, which we should acknowledge. I'm not going to go through all the various points, they have been thoroughly captured, and they will be written down and passed on. So the proposal I have to make is to formally thank scrutiny panel A, and absolutely all who were associated with her or sailed in her, for carrying out this review and acknowledge that the findings of this review create future opportunities for the county council to build on the strengths and address the weaknesses which have been identified, supporting Lincolnshire towns to remain viable and resilient. We will record and capture all of those comments that have been made and questions asked and answered this morning. So I move that with those taken into account, the committee supports the report, and recommendations are summarised on page forty-two to forty-four of the report, with, as I said, those items captured, and approves the draft report attached to appendix A as the final report on the town centre improvements for submission to the executive at its meeting on the third of October 2023. Does anyone dissent from that? I see no dissenters. I see no dissenters, so that is agreed. Ladies and gentlemen, we are running slightly behind, but only slightly behind time, but our scheduled agenda, which is a very long one this morning, carries us all the way through to one o'clock. I am going to take just a five-minute recess as a comfort break, and we will then resume in five minutes. councillor Diltz, before I do, did you want to come back on a final point?
You're very kind. Mr Chairman, I just wanted to say, on behalf of Tracy, myself, and I'm sure the officers as well, and all members of the panel, can I thank you for the way you've handled the debate this morning, but also to thank all members for their valued contributions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is eleven forty-five, we will take a five-minute recess, we will reform at eleven fifty. We will reform at eleven fifty. Welcome back, ladies. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We resume at eleven fifty-two, two minutes later, I'm afraid. And we now move, and thank you for those watching on the live stream for your patience, we now move to item eight on the agenda, which is Energy Options Analysis for Greater Lincolnshire Final Report: Outcomes and Next Steps. And you'll find this report on pages one hundred and forty-five to two hundred and seventy-six of the agenda. It follows a report presented in April this year that focused on the interim report commissioned by the Greater Lincolnshire Infrastructure Group. The present report summarizes the final report and presents us with the outcomes and outlines, then next steps and actions. The actions before us as a committee this morning are, the report invites us to review and comment on the contents of the final report and provide feedback on the next steps identified. Report will be presented by Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Development, who is here on behalf of Mick King, Head of Environment Infrastructure. And Joanna Rhodes' project off at utilities is also present to support with questions. So Vanessa, you've waited very patiently, although you've actually been very active in previous items, so over to you on this very important report.
Thank you very much, Chairman. The work that we are sharing with you today is part of our work on strategic infrastructure. We consider strategic infrastructure in a, in a wide setting, and I know we've talked to committee about this before, from transport to water management and of course, of relevance today, energy. As you say, the R L B report that is appended to today's report will be familiar to all in the chamber as we brought the interim version to the committee in April. Subsequently, we worked with a range of partners across Greater Lincolnshire, from district councils to the energy sector, in developing this work. As officers, we recognize that members gave us a really clear steer when we were here previously, that this is about focusing on better outcomes for businesses, for our communities, making places better and removing some of the challenges. And that is something that is driving us as officers to focus in on our next steps, driving forward the recommendations. We also recognize the importance of keeping this committee informed on this really important agenda item and would ask that the committee continue, consider our return on an annual basis to report on energy in its widest sense, including the discussions today. In terms of the outputs and next steps that are suggested in the report, Jo is going to pick up on those now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Yes, so as you're familiar with the report that's appended to, sorry, the R L B report that's appended to the, this committee report, it does include several recommendations that have been grouped for ease in Appendix Two, so hopefully you found that useful. I won't go through all the recommendations this morning, but more to go through, I suppose, the themes in our approach to taking those forward. The report, the R L B report does group the recommendations into three themes, the theme of collaboration, energy transformation and innovation. And it's probably worth noting the importance of the collaboration theme, and that is something that's mentioned several times through the report. So based on those recommendations and also actions that have arisen during the engagement process, we've come up with a plan of prioritized actions that have included in section one point four of the report for you to see. Rather than going through them, I thought it's probably more, more beneficial to spend the time on, on having, having questions and comments on those. But I will say that the actions are focused on activity that are most appropriate for Lincolnshire County Council to lead and facilitate at first instance. They are classified for ease into activities that we are actively underway with, that we feel will emerge in between now and two years' time, for example, and then ones that we will think to tackle will be tackled in, in two years hence. And they all go, go forward to address some challenges of how to take forward that collaboration and also how to address capacity gaps in the electricity distribution network. It's probably good to point out as well that we're looking at having that coordinated approach across the council. It's, it's included in the report, but also recognize that we'll be working closely with the Sidiff Working Group to initially use them as a forum to engage with local authorities and the wider partners with the recommendations of the Energy Options Analysis. So as Vanessa's already mentioned, we, we would look to bring, obviously recognizing the importance of energy and the progress that's happened to date, we would look to bring the, it back, the kind of outcomes and next steps back to the committee on an annual basis to discuss and also, I suppose, show how we, we're evolving as well because energy is a constantly evolving landscape with plenty to, plenty of, of movement in that field. So just to bring it back annually to, to discuss as necessary, if that's okay. At this point, I'll hand back to Vanessa or, oh, back to the Chairman for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanna, and thank you, Vanessa, for introducing this item. And before I turn to members on the floor with questions and comments, can I just also say thank you for page one hundred and forty-six in the document, which right up front summarizes the issues raised when this committee earlier in the year saw the draft report and some of the responses to that. That clarity is much appreciated. So questions to the floor? We start with Councillor Austin.
It's not a question to the floor, it's a question to you or to one of the officers. We are quorum, aren't we? We, we've got very few of us here and we don't want to waste it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Austin. I did check, quorum is three, so we're fine.
Having resolved that procedural issue, Councillor Baxter.
Thank you. I'm pleased to see the report and I thank you for the presentation of it. I've got to say that it's, in some cases, impenetrable in terms of the, it's very dense. I guess that's inevitable. And at the same time, I think it's cost us over, over a hundred thousand pounds for the delivery of the report. And so I ask a question about value for money. It's not for me to decide whether it's value for money, but there's an awful lot here that, I'm not saying it has been cut and paste from elsewhere, but some of the descriptions of the technologies could be cut and paste from, from elsewhere. Within the content, we talk about, a lot of talk about geothermal, no mention of ground source, and I think there's a confusion of the two. I had, I'd just been looking through it. I had forgotten that Scunthorpe is in, is in Lincolnshire because it's not in our Lincolnshire, it's in the, the north of Lincolnshire. But I'm pleased to read that there is a working geothermal in the hospital in, in Scunthorpe and there is other potential, but the, the technology of geothermal is much bolder, more expensive and potentially much more fruitful than ground source. I, I think that, that ground source has been wrongly labeled or, it's quite confusing to see ground source, which is a much cheaper and more easy technology described as, as geothermal. And then we've also got mention of climate, carbon capture and storage, which is bordering on science fiction. And as the report says, there are no, there are currently no commercial-scale bioenergy carbon capture, storage operations within the UK. That's not to say that this can't be invented and developed as a technology soon, but we really need to work in the realms of established or emerging technologies, not, not technologies which have yet to be invented. It's, it's, it's kind of sidetracking us from looking at the actual solutions, which are more likely to be solar of one kind or another, renewable of one kind or another. And I'd, I'd welcome some kind of commentary on, I'd, I'd thank the, the report authors for taking account of the question around the use of large-scale solar on our valuable farmland. Lots of the, the objections to the large-scale solar has been, we are displacing food production. But as the Chairman said at the start of the meeting, a lot of the farmland in Lincolnshire is actually producing energy crops. So energy from a crop or energy from a, a large-scale solar, which is better? I don't know whether this, this addresses that issue. So to summarize, I think that we really need to be clearer about cracking on with the, the technologies that we know can work in a time scale that is going to be a proper response to the impending disaster of climate change, rather than speculating whether geothermal systems or carbon capture, storage systems will be commercialized in, in enough time to prevent the catastrophe that's, that's facing the Lincolnshire coast. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Baxter. Vanessa, would you like to unpick any of that, please?
Indeed. I understand fully, the, the comment on ground source and geothermal, we'll go back and just make sure that we're happy that, that we could make it a bit clearer if it's not clear on reading. One of the helpful things about other people seeing reports when you've been too ingrained in them is people pointing out that they, they, they could be better. So we take that on board and we'll make sure it's clear, Councillor Baxter, apologies. In terms of the carbon capture and storage, I think something I would comment on is that, as we're aware, partners contributed to the cost of this work across Greater Lincolnshire. And carbon capture and storage is something that's of particular interest on the Humber Bank, so recognizing that for some partners that, that needs to remain in there, it's important for them to see within the final report, but also understand the ambition around technologies that we work with. So happy to take those comments on board.
Thank you for that. If I can just, just add, my understanding, which could be as imperfect as it usually is, but my understanding is that in terms of structures, below-ground structures which are particularly fruitful and potentially commercially viable for geothermal, there are some structures, I'm trying to remember the name, is it Sherwood Sandstone or Sherwood, it's Sherwood something, which ironically are nowhere near Sherwood Forest, they're actually up in the extreme northeast of our county. And in fact, I'm not sure much of it clips into the historic county of Lincolnshire, but are within Greater Lincolnshire. It is something which perhaps could be passed back to be explored thoroughly without any confusion over names. And I would just say that as far as ground source heat pumps are concerned, which as Councillor Baxter says, is very different technology, that is, on an individual dwelling basis, something which is much more expensive than air-sourced heat pumps, but is increasingly being explored, including by, by me in another role at, at district level, in terms of new build for area provision, because there are things that we can do with that, and these technologies emerge all the time. The basic principle of a reverse, reverse refrigerator is well-understood, but the way in which they are applied and the cost efficiency and affordability of the way in which they're applied is improving all the time, and that is something which will be looked at. Certainly in central Lincolnshire, the local plan was amended and a five-year review adopted in April of this year, which is quite stringent in requiring developers, particularly those developing at scale, to provide renewables. Now clearly, a local plan isn't going to say which renewable because it'll vary on a case-by-case basis, but certainly one of the things which I suspect will emerge over the coming years and decades is a much more widespread use of area, ground source, because if you put it in when you build quite a few houses, it becomes dramatically cheaper than if you try and retrofit, where you really do need quite deep pockets to be able to afford it. Can I put in a couple of issues myself at this stage? I think as a general point, I had a concern which I expressed first time around, and I will express again so that it can go forward with the report, that grid capacity and the inflexibility of the grid in our county and indeed beyond is a serious hindrance to economic development. And when I'm talking about grid capacity, I'm not only talking about getting sufficient electrical goodness in the form that we want it out, I'm talking about the ability to take locally-produced electricity in. Now, some forms of local generation such as onshore wind or, or NSIP solar, and remember, we have now a dozen NSIP solar projects within or straddling the borders of the County of Lincolnshire, which is, I think, a concentration nobody anticipated when the rules were written. Those might have a certain controversy about them, but the law now does provide for local generation, and local generation is good, providing it is the right generation in the right place. So we do need flexibility of the grid. And the other thing that I'm particularly concerned about is we have this enormous resource in the North Sea, which we're only beginning to tap. It has a potential, depending on who you read, of at least three hundred and fifty gigawatts just in the shallow North Sea. An awful lot of that electricity comes ashore on the coast of Lincolnshire. And every time somebody, as we've heard in statements to the Planning Committee, Planning and Regulation Committee here at the County Council, from a developer who came along and did pre-application advice, they will bring their electricity ashore for their particular offshore wind farm. And then another offshore wind farm comes along and will want to bring their electricity ashore. And I really do think that we need to stress to central government the importance, the importance of coordinating this. It is not something which can simply be left to the market. We must have a couple of sensible central points on the coast where this electricity can be brought ashore and where the thing can be managed without constantly digging up with underground cable runs or simply peppering the entire coast with chain after chain of pylons. Yes, there will be disruption if we're going to have clean energy, we have to have the infrastructure for it. But I was very pleased, Vanessa, to hear your comments about talking to central government and coordinating in actually getting some of this, some of this organized, because banging heads together in Westminster sounds very arrogant for a local council, but we're the ones on the ground. We see the situation with constant works being done, just the scale of the Viking link works, and then we think of that multiplied and multiplied and multiplied. We have to have capacity built in which will cope with future expansion, both at the micro level in the grid and beyond it. Can I make just one further point? When endorsing collaboration in principle, are we confident that setting up the Greater Lincolnshire Energy Working Group When endorsing collaboration in principle, are we confident that setting up the Greater Lincolnshire Energy Working Group will give us enough strength to address local issues with central government? And any comments as yet on who might be members of that group? And I, I look to Vanessa and Joanna for that one.
I think we're both leaping for the microphone, we're doing, we can't decide who's taking it. I think different levels, different groups probably have a, a different purpose, and that starts to be explored within the report. Ian Fitch, chief exec of Northcave Stephen, also chairs our officers' infrastructure group. And we've recently provided a note for him to explore some of these issues with his fellow chief execs. So I, I wouldn't want to step on that discussion particularly, but I think just to reassure, reassure committee that these things are sort of being looked at at a, a senior level.
That is exactly as it should be, and that's the answer I hope, I hope that you'd give. And a safe pair of hands in Mr Fitch, who I know very well. Councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'm really quite grateful we haven't got big tranches of geothermal, because my visits to New Zealand, there, there's certainly a lot of hot rocks out there, and that leads you to have lots of other problems. So although it is a cheap source, you're quite right with ground source, it has changed significantly. You've either got to have quite a lot of pipes running out, so you've got a lot of land, or you've got to be prepared to make some big boreholes. You could also source heat from the water, we've, we've got an abundance. So all this is, is basically using a pump to use the differences in temperature. So that's, that's something else in there. And the only other thing that I could comment on, we've commented about the lack of power in certain towns. And, and actual fact, it actually limits the EV points, because we've got lots of money for EV points, but no, nothing to power them. They look very pretty there, but not, not, not good if they don't work. Hydrogen, JCB have put a, a lot of money into hydrogen with, both with plant. And the other week, they got a Sherpa van up and running with one of their own engines. Hydrogen will be there, I know people have played with it forever. But I think that's something we ought to look into. And I, I'm pretty sure there'll be some Lincolnshire projects before long. Thanks, Jim.
Vanessa, did you want to come back on any of that, please?
We've noted the points, I think, in terms of lack of power. I was, I was delighted really to be on a call where Joe was presenting some of this and we were demonstrating some of the, the sort of tools and how he can use it with a number of colleagues with a, a planning hat on, who had a planning hats on the call. And they could really see how it could be useful in terms of local plan work, in terms of development for, for housing and commercial sector. And it, it, you could see in their faces how tangible that was for them. Absolutely, again, very selfishly with my sort of EV hat on, seeing the benefits there. I suppose the next step for us is the and-so-what factor, isn't it? So that we're not constrained by what we do, but how we then say we need to push our partners harder in certain places so that we can say, you need to meet Lincolnshire at least partway on this in terms of your development, so that growth can continue as it needs to across Greater Lincolnshire.
Thank you, and I think that kind of sums up, in a sense, the, the thrust of this report. We have to create structures which provide us with a fact-based, evidence-based means of negotiating the kind of energy supplies that we need to go forward. And we are not alone in this. Other, other county areas and unitaries up and down the country will be asking exactly the same questions, because we basically have a particularly antiquated generating system and we have a particularly antiquated grid, which was fine for its time. But we are in a period of extremely rapid change, and the grid has perhaps changed a little bit more slowly than our ability to supply it with clean energy, particularly if that accelerates, it's going to have to accelerate over the next 10, 20 and 30 years. The North Sea, and I know there are some people who will always say, well, yes, the wind doesn't blow all the time, and that is quite true. But nevertheless, it is an extraordinary resource in which we have a, a unique sector easily available to us and relatively cheaply available to us. It's making sure we can make practical use of that, and that involves making practical impacts on policymakers, decision-makers and suppliers, including the energy infrastructure suppliers. And that is what this report sets out to do. I'm just looking around the room to see if any member wishes to make a further comment. Seeing none, in that case I will try and sum up and come to a proposal, which is that I move that the report be received and that the committee's endorsement of the actions undertaken and actions planned be recorded. I ask that the comments of today's discussions, as captured, be shared with leading offices and portfolio holders for their consideration. And I ask that the thematic area entitled 'Energy efficiencies' be added on the list of items to be programmed going forward. This will be an umbrella for papers relevant to energy, utilities and so forth, which will be added to consider, for consideration in the 2023/24 period, so that we do not lose sight of updates. Does anyone dissent from that? Seeing no dissent, that matter is agreed, and I thank members and officers for their contribution on that item. Which allows us to move to item nine on the agenda, which is the Sutton Bridge Placemaking Scheme overview. This report is on pages 277 to 284 of the pack and provides an overview of the Sutton Bridge placemaking scheme, which seeks to deliver a programme of integrated initiatives in Sutton Bridge, create conditions to increase footfall between the marina and local businesses and services, and increase local spend and potentially small business growth, and add value to the scheme to extend the original 2012 moorings, which was fully funded through the Sail the Wash initiative and was delivered in summer 2021. And the action before the committee this morning is as follows. The report invites us to review and comment on its contents and to recommend any actions to the relevant portfolio holder for their consideration. And the report will be presented by Hayley Redford, project manager, I believe, or possibly by Simon Wright, who is sitting next to Hayley. We have, we have a richness of, of speakers in the chamber today. Simon, if you're kicking us off, over to you.
Thank you very much, chairman. And yeah, I'm sure Hayley's here to give her support for any tricky questions at the end, so thank you, Hayley. And thank you for that introduction, chairman. With that introduction, I'll move on to some of the, the backstory, if I can put it that way, as to why we're doing this work. There are a number of assets in Sutton Bridge and in the environments surrounding the village that we really want to capitalise on. And one of the justifications for doing this scheme, not only with the, the, the creation of the marina, but there are some gems in the village, the, the only Flint church in Lincolnshire, the, the connections with Peter Scott and the, the natural heritage of the Wash and the ecology and habitat, which is so unique to, to our area. And to do something in the village to support Sutton Bridge as a place is something which we're very happy to recommend to this committee. And I think these works will not only serve visitors, I think they're also very important to local residents of Sutton Bridge. The area that we're looking at is not a particularly friendly place for pedestrians, although it runs right alongside the, the river. So improving that, that pedestrian way for, for, for local residents as well as visitors to, to get exercise and, and enjoy the environment, I think is something also to be recommended for the scheme. So the scheme itself comprises two main components. There's what I would call the sort of the fabric of the scheme, i.e. the drop curves, the creation of the steps and, and the physical aspects of, of improving the, the, the walking experience, we'll put it like that. But there's also the public realm element, which is also very important, because we want to make this pathway a much more engaging experience for people using it and use way markers, information boards, seating and things like that to, to create that sort of centre place. And hopefully people will linger there and, and enjoy the opportunity to, to look at the, the birds coming in off the, off the Wash, et cetera. Funding for the scheme has been secured, as I understand it. There's an in-principle confirmation from LCC for £75,000, which will take care of those fabric works I've described. But we've also been able to tap into some of the last of the Sail the Wash funding, which comes to £25,000, which will take care of those public realm things like the way marking and the seating. I come to the three Ps, permissions, progress and programme. I'm pleased to say that all the permissions for the scheme has been dealt with and is in hand. Progress is, has been proceeding at pace. And I think it's worth mentioning two facilitating bodies in, in helping us bring this scheme forward. We're obviously using our term contractor, TSB, to help with those physical works. But we've also been heavily supported by the University of Lincoln and their transported arts team. And I think it's very noticeable, looking at the work that the team have done, there's been a huge amount of public engagement with residents in Sutton Bridge, which has been very, very encouraging. And they have really, the residents have taken this on board to help us shape some of the physical attributes of, of the public realm and the design of the seating and things like that. As I understand it, there is a further round of engagement in the new year, which brings me on to the final P of, of programme. So with some further final engagement straight after Christmas and the new year, the construction phase for this project is earmarked for March, running through to April of 2024, with plans already starting to be looked at, I'm sure, for a grand unveiling and celebration event in the spring, May, June of 2024. That's a very quick summary of the paper, I don't want to repeat, which is in the paper in front of you, chairman. I'm happy to answer any, any questions. I'd welcome feedback from the committee today, thank you.
Thank you very much, Simon. It's, it's interesting, isn't it? We've been discussing earlier placemaking in the macro sense, with broad sweep across the whole county, across all our market towns. And here is a lovely example, going back to my little catchphrase about making places better. A lovely example of placemaking at the micro level, at a very local level and at a very practical level. And certainly I've been very pleased to see it. Do we have any questions or comments from the floor on this excellent scheme? I'm not seeing any at the moment. I beg your pardon. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, chairman. Just to say, it's very welcome. I, visiting family in Norfolk, I go through Sutton Bridge on a fairly regular basis. And most people that go through that, that area, I would guess, only know the bridge. And anything that encourages them to, to stop off and have a cup of coffee or a haircut or a tattoo, whichever, would, would be most welcome. And so, yeah, it, it, when you look out over the bridge, you, you kind of wonder what's there. And showing people what's there is, is more than welcome, so well done.
Sorry, I had a little microphone failure there. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I've got this wonderful image in my mind of the AJ Baxter Tattoo Hair Dressing and Coffee Company, which is going to be providing the market. Councillor Skinner, you had a point today.
Thank you, chairman. It's the bridal dress and the bike that really worries me. I just wondered what sort of impact this will have on our winter all-year-round Lincolnshire economy. Do we, do we have any idea?
Thank you for the question, chairman. Councillor, I don't think we have any specific sort of seasonal information on the marina. Obviously the marina itself and, and the, the village and the works proposed. Certainly as I understand it, the marina is really attractive to day boats. So I, I guess there won't be many people using marina in, in the deepest winter. But as I say, the, the, the works, I hope, will still improve the, the walkway along the riverbank at any time of the year. As I say, I was there at the weekend, it is not a particularly friendly place for pedestrians. It, it does get quite a lot of commercial transport alongside it. So anything to do that year round, I think, will be a bonus, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just add a, a big well done to all who've been involved in this. I do appreciate that there is a further round of consultation to go. And if any, any, anything material comes out of that, please do bring that to the committee by way of a written note or indeed a, a short report. But it, it does seem to me that this is an excellent part of the bigger picture, because anything to do with our visitor economy here in Lincolnshire is really important. We have steps being taken across the county to try and maximise the value of water as a positive resource. We all know, particularly those of us who serve on flood and, and water management, the risks and the problems water can, can, can pose. But we are now looking at it very much as a resource which can provide benefit. For example, if you look in, in other parts of the county, you're looking at measures to bring the River Slem or back into navigate, navigation, link that through to the Witherm to provide inland waterways links, which will bring more tourist traffic through to our county and more, more spend and more prosperity will follow that. And this is very much part of that pattern. So I would thank, on behalf of the committee, everybody who's worked on this scheme and we wish it well and we hope to see it. The construction period in spring presumably is designed so that when we get into the summer season, it will be ready and it will be able to be up and running. So we welcome those positive changes, both to increase the footfall and to stimulate business growth. And as I said, it really is a great example of supporting towns, which we were talking about earlier in the agenda, to become resilient, to recover from pandemic setbacks and to set the foundations for a more prosperous future. So I'm sure that our officers will capture the comments that they've heard this, I was going to say this morning, this afternoon now. So the proposal before us is that we capture those and record those comments. Subject to those, I move that the report be endorsed and that our satisfaction be recorded on the overall placemaking plan and the positive impact it is anticipated to have for the villagers' community and on visitor experience. And I also ask that the comments from today's discussion, discussion as captured be shared with leading officers and portfolio holders for their consideration and reflection as they progress with the next steps of the project. Does anyone dissent from that? And I see no dissenters, that therefore is agreed. And thank you for your contributions, members and officers, on that topic. We now move to item 10 on the agenda, which is Service Level Performance Reporting Against the Corporate Performance Framework 2022/2023 Quarter One. And I do think these titles are probably written just to see if I can actually manage to read them out without fluffing my lines. I've done it, but I ain't going to try it twice. This quarterly report is on pages 285 to 294 of the agenda before you and presents us with an overview of key performance indicators relevant to economy, environment and waste. And the actions before us are as follows. The committee is invited to consider and comment on the environment and economy service level performance for 2022/23 Quarter One. There you are, I did have to read it out twice, in the interests of saving time. And given that I take the report as read by members, I will open that up to comments and questions to the lead officers who are present today. And indeed, in the case of one substitute today. So do we have any questions and comments from the floor? Councillor Baxter.
Thank, thank you. Relating back to the waste conversation we had at the beginning of the meeting, I see that the Quarter One Waste Performance PI 76 shows that 73% of what is presented at waste recycling centres has, has, has been recycled. That's below target, if I'm reading it correctly, and I think significantly below what we've, what we've seen before. I think we've seen 80% or more before. I echo the comments that councillor Bowles said earlier on about driving to the, the household waste site and then the facilities not being there. If you drive with a, a bootload of, of plastic or other materials and to recycle and then you are told, put them in the general waste, it kind of, it, it, it quashes your spirits and it undermines your confidence in the county council's ability to recycle. So I'd want that to be followed up. I'd also like to say that the household waste collected, no, not that one, the, the recycling rates, I say again, and I've had a, a short conversation offline with Mike, Mike Reid about some breakdown. I think that these figures need to be more accessible in terms of the paper, whether it's paper or plastic or green waste or every, waste diverted from landfill covers a lot of different categories. And I'd like to get into the detail of the categories and even also by, by district. I realise that where we've got the household collections of paper and card separated, we're doing well. But this is, this is a war, a war on waste, and, and we need a lot of detailed information, far more than just it didn't go to the energy from waste incinerator. from waste incinerator, it got recycled. Recycled is a broad category, and I'd like to know, I'd like to see more in these reports about the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. We have Rachel with us, who is Mike Reed for the day. Would you care to respond to some of those points, please?
Oh, dear. Thank you, Chairman. I take on board your points, councillor Baxter. I guess we are kind of limited in terms of the corporate report, the volume of detail that we can go down to, and in particular, when we have to go, you know, when you want to see that data district by district, I'd be more than happy to talk that through with you, and come up with any specifics that you're looking through. I think it's also important to kind of respond in terms of the percentage recycled at the household waste recycling centres. I think it's also important to note that we need to look at these performance indicators together, and not only in isolation, because actually, the overall volume of waste, first and foremost, that's been presented to us, is continued to be down. The kilograms per household across the county is down, so that's at that highest level again of the waste hierarchy and waste minimisation. So public engagement, the haulage contract, the ability to grow our off-takers for the waste streams is work that's ongoing all the time. So I take on board your comment about people being asked to put things into a general container if they've segregated it. I guess we have that balance from the public perception of their, do they go away again until we've been able to empty that waste stream and then come back, or do we allow them to dispose of it? So all ongoing work, it's not a magic bullet, but I do take on board what you're saying. I'd be happy to talk to you about the detail, Mike and myself offline, and we could come up with something that might be useful to the committee.
Ashley, would you like to come back? Are you happy with your answer? Yeah, I just float, as in addition to what you've just said, Rachel. In terms of detailed numbers, and I think we as committee members have to acknowledge that there is a balance between the workload we impose, and hence the cost we impose in terms of providing data, and the benefit that we get from it. And by all means, have that offline conversation. But I just wonder whether there might, for example, be an annual, more detailed dive into the numbers, which might be a compromise. Now, that's just my suggestion. Members may be satisfied or not satisfied with that, which would allow us to interrogate these matters in more detail, because I do think they're important. On the point of view of going down to the, well, I still persist in calling the tip, but shouldn't, particularly in this chair, the recycling centre, and finding a particular container is for, I think we've all had that frustration. I know that officers are looking at it, and an earlier item on the agenda may help us to take practical steps to address that going forward. I think it is just worth remembering that if something does go into the general bin, it does not go to landfill, which leads me to the comment I wanted to make. Almost everything which goes into the general bin and is not recycled will then actually go to, it'll be turned into electricity at the energy from waste. So it is an alternative use. Is that lower down the hierarchy, the waste hierarchy, the famous pyramid? Yes, it is. So clearly, the optimal thing is to recycle where we possibly can. And on that subject, I was very, very proudly saying a month or two ago to a parish council how proud we were that we were at 3.13 in terms of landfill, which beats hollow our target of 5%, and that I couldn't guarantee it. It was a real big effort, but it was really good. And here we are today at 2.63, which I first saw when it was reported to overview and scrutiny management board on which I serve. And it is really, really good to see. The absolute stellar leaders in this, in the whole of Europe, are the Swedes, who have recycling of just over, I beg your pardon, landfill of just over 1%. They have a much wider spread energy from waste activity than we do. But it is really, really good to see that number. Let's hope we can keep it there and continue to drive it down. But I would praise everybody concerned on that. Rachel, do you want to come on?
Yeah, just to come back, the 2.63 is the forecast for the whole of the current financial year. At the end of quarter one, it's actually 0.01% has gone. What we have done is worked really hard there in the past. The 3.6% has been as a result of the energy from waste annual outage, so we've diverted. What we've managed to do is work with other providers to secure alternative energy recovery for all of the curbside materials, rather than sending them to landfill. It puts us leaps and bounds ahead of many other local authorities.
Well, thank you for that. It is an enormous achievement, and I think we as a committee do recognise the tremendous amount of very hard work that goes into this. It's easy for us to say we'd like to see these figures better. It's very, very hard for people to actually, particularly when we're already doing really well, to get really well into the territory of even better. But we obviously mustn't be complacent. There are always areas that we can interrogate more or do better in. councillor Baxter, do you want to come back?
Yes. We're doing really, really well at not sending waste to landfill. We're not doing very well at recycling.
I think that comes down to a definition of what really well is, because there are many who would say that we are doing well at recycling, but could do better, because we can always do better. But those are matters of definitions. Please do come back if you wish to.
We used to have a recycling rate of over 50%, and it's now barely 40%. We're not doing very well.
Again, I refer you back to, and I'm not going to drag this on forever, but I do refer you back to conversations that we've had in this committee on previous committees, which is that although it sounds counterintuitive, sometimes, I would refer you to the waste pyramid, and what is at the top of the waste pyramid is not generating waste in the first place. So there are times when we might generate, when we might have a lower recycling rate. That is not always a negative, because there can be reasons for that which are positive. But I think we're moving into an area which is so intricate that we're probably diverting ourselves a little bit. I absolutely understand the point you make, but I think what all the committee are united on is that we are keen to make sure that we are not just doing well, but that we are absolutely the best, and we will strive towards that. Do I have any other comments from the floor? I'm looking to other councillors. I am seeing none, not just on waste, but on any other area covered under this agenda item? In that case, I will move to the proposal, which is to thank officers for the clarification that they have forwarded this morning. And I move, I remove, I move that the report be received, and I ask that the comment from today's discussion, as captured, will be shared with leading officers and portfolio holders for their consideration. Does anyone dissent? I see no dissent, and therefore, that matter is agreed. We therefore move to the last substantive item on the agenda, which is the Committee Work Programme. This item is on pages 295 to 302 of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the contents of the work programme. The report will be presented by Kiara Hatzianu, our scrutiny officer. Our actions are to review the work programme and highlights, and I beg your pardon, to review the work programme and to highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. Kiara, you have waited very patiently. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to take much more of the time today. Just to let you know, the work programme is obviously a living and breathing document that is developed following each meeting and considered at each meeting, and presents the works that have been scheduled for the rest of the year. Just to turn your gaze into our next meeting on the 24th of October, we have three items on the agenda, one of which is a briefing report. Items are the Lincolnshire County Council Carbon Report 2022/2023. The proposals for scrutiny reviews, having completed the two scrutiny panel pieces of work already, the overview and scrutiny management board is inviting us to put together a list of topics for consideration for the next round of allocations. And we are also due the Thedlethorpe Geological Disposal Facility Working Group Six monthly update. And this concludes my update to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kiara. Any questions for Kiara from members on the floor? I am seeing none. In that case, I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages 297 to 304. Any member dissent? I see no dissent, and therefore, that matter is agreed, which brings us finally to the end of the meeting. We have concluded our business. I thank everybody, both in the chamber and attending online, for their attendance. I thought we had an absolutely excellent series of debates this morning. And returning to where we began, I think the quality of the debate is one of which our former chairman councillor Woodton would have been very proud. Thank you very much for your participation. The meeting now closes at 12:40.